Happy with in the end, but in terms of what you have in front of you, I think there's a, if you wanted to, there's at least an argument that you could modify the staff's opinion of what that provision means.
So, what, I mean, I want to get to the fear factor. So, say we go ahead and allow the variance in crew.
Not a variance.
No, not a variance.
Excuse me. Interpretation.
Interpretation, excuse me, interpretation as one time, but give the direction to come back and have the planning commission staff work on giving us some better language.
Mr. Mayor, the council wants to do something along those lines. Let me suggest that you say, make a finding that the ordinance was ambiguous and that because of that, the architect could not have really known in advance exactly what the provision would allow. And therefore, if you wanted to allow something for this site and this site only and allow staff to come back and revise or suggest revisions that would clarify what that provision means, I think that's something that would allow this without making it precedential.
Please. Thank you, and I would like each council member to chime in on that particular comment that Mr. Connors has made. Now, where do you sit with that, councilmember, Councilwoman, excuse me, Lewis?
Now, I, I think that with this particular situation that the interpretation was such that the code was unclear and with what the client, the applicant has done with the main house walls and the parapet is within a reasonable interpretation of the code and I'm okay with that. I, I'm not so sure about the accessory structures, but it would be, I'm okay with granting the appeal on the main house and then having staff come back with more language to clarify the use of roof walls over and above the sidewall height, but within the area of the maximum that we allow in the roof height.
And then therefore-
In a step back situation, if it's going to be a completely vertical height, because we don't want the massing. We don't want a situation where it's going to be a full building all the way to the maximum height and the sheer wall.
Okay, and that means reduction in the accessory structure as well as the garage area, does that sound correct? Is that why you're-
She's just addressing-
Is she just addressing the main-
I'm just addressing the main house right now, I'm not sure about the-
Vice Mayor, it sounds similar to what you said.
It sounds, is that right?
Yeah.
It sounds similar to what I said.
Yes, exactly.
That's what I thought. Counselor, or, where do you feel?
I can understand in this situation, the parapet's on the main house, it sounds like a reasonable request with a need for interpretation. I'm not on board with the accessory structures.
Okay. I would echo the same. I'm okay with the main portion, but I do have an issue due to the proximity of the surrounding properties with the accessory structures as well as the garage. So, I think that we're all pretty consistent related to the main structure, which would be consistent with the language, so do you need a-
Thank you.
This is an approval or part and I will mark. Well, I think you're gonna, are you gonna do it all in one or take it in two parts?
We can do whatever you want, but we can do it in one and the main structure in one and then the aisle on the accessory structure as well as the roof.
If that's, if that's the rule of council, you can do it in one, as you just said. As to the main structure, grant the appeal, as to the accessory structure and the garage, do more.
Okay. Please, one more question from Vice Mayor.
Lisa, I have a question for you. So, on the accessory, if I understand the issue, this wall, if this is the sidewall, is not in compliance because it goes all the way up and the applicant would like to define the end of the wall to be wherever the roof line is identified, which is right about here. So, while this one is not in compliance, it appears that that one, because it overhangs the sidewall slightly, is in compliance.
Yeah. The issue is where there's no overhang. It's when we say it's not in compliance in this area.
The issue is where there's no overhang. So, on that, so that's even a better example. So, on that wall, the problem is the little six inch or one foot strip-
Right.
-where the, and which is done for aesthetic purposes, I assume.
But other than that, the other part of it is in compliance?
Yes.
This part goes to the eleven foot and then that's the roof down that the roof overhangs.
And that's okay?
Yeah, because it's got the roof overhang.
Oh, well-
So, it's just a little larynx here.
Because it defines, because, because the, the overhang, for purposes of the code, defines the roof, is that right?
Correct.
Whereas over here, since you don't have that, there's a problem.
Well, that's, that's the end wall though. So, it's okay.
Oh, that's the end wall.
This is the sidewall over here.
I see.
But if there was a break, then it would be acceptable.
Right, if there was a break, right.
It'd be acceptable.
Right.
Please, I think the, we have one of them.
So, this model probably shows it the best. We can have this end wall and it can go up to fourteen feet, just as if you were to have a structure like this.
Yeah, because you've got it at, you've got that overhangs.
Because the roof overhangs by like a foot.
Yeah.
Second, you pull it out, the side becomes a sidewall that's over the eleven feet. So, all these structures, this lower box is eleven feet.
Yeah.
And it's just when you pull this end wall out to the roof-
And align it.
-then it becomes not allowed.
Because you don't align it.
You don't have it, because you're late.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think we get it.
So, I guess, I guess it goes back to the width of that vertical connection.
And that's the interpretation that I was hoping for, that I could move forward with future projects.
The width of the vertical, yeah.
Right, would be the minimum required in the building.
Which, okay, given that, I'm okay with both the accessory structure and the garage.
So, let's go re-chime in on that. Vice Mayor, are you okay with now the clarity and interpretation of that wall and this-
Do you see what you're saying?
Do you see?
It's, it's the definition of the width of the end wall being, you know, higher than it's supposed to be.
It's because there's no break in materials.
No, I understand, okay.
And you're okay, are you okay with assets? I don't know, it's hard to, we'll see if we get you.
My vote's still the same. I'm saying where I-
You're staying where you're, okay.
With, if it's, if it's within a size, that it doesn't become a big mass, then it's more of an architectural feature instead of a massing feature to enclose a giant space at a height and width, and so it's-
I, I really get that. My only concern is what I had asked for, which is how can it be abused?
Right.
Because on the issue of the main house, as long as it's within the envelope-
Uh-huh.
-of what had traditionally been allowed, there won't be more mass than what had traditionally been allowed, so I'm not worried about an abuse.
Because it stepped back.
Right.
Because it steps back, it's within that envelope, it's that parapet within the envelope, so there's no way it can be abused because it's not coming outside of the envelope. On the sidewall, if you're allowing the architectural feature, which frankly, I think is attractive, I don't know, maybe somebody could build a three-foot-high roof.
I don't think so. If you, if you define it-
Maybe there could be an abuse.
...restrict it to a narrow spot.
So, I think that in my shot at this is, I would agree that aesthetically, it's pleasing, but I want to make sure that we follow up with planning commission's staff to make sure we don't get into that mass, so we need the language more.
I think that was my suggestion, that if the council wants to go in a way that restricts it just to this project and not as a precedential matter, you still grant the appeal because of a lack of clarity in the staff's opinion and send it back to staff to see if there's additional things that could be done to address this situation as opposed to others.
But I think, I think Lisa was saying that this interpretation or alternative interpretation up there would not require a modification of the code.
Correct.
It's just a interpretation.
Interpretation.
And then that could help us, help me move forward with other projects as they come in.
But if you want something greater than-
So, we, you direction.
And, and at the same time, we would continue to study it, but I would appreciate getting that direction of the interpretation and I'm comfortable with this.
Right.
Wordings, it's consistent with what the applicant's requesting, it's, you know, reasonable. I guess my other concern is if we, we just approve this as one project approval-
Yep.
-you're going to get an appeal next month.
No, no, no.
Because it's going to take us several months to get some good wording out of the planning commission, and we have a couple other projects that are interested in doing something similar.
Sure.
Bring the line in.
We'd love to see these things.
I want to bring in a model.
That's what the planning commission's for.
Yeah, well, you know, the process comes here. So, that's where, this is the interpretation, so we move forward.
So, is a question clear?
Please.
Because if the process here, if we grant the appeal with the understanding that planning will propose some language to address the, the lack of clarity in the code, that then that language will go to the planning commission, is that correct?
It doesn't have to. In fact, what I think Lisa is saying, what she's going to do is take what you said tonight and say, you're suggesting the alternate interpretation that she's showing on this slide.
Right.
We're giving her direction.
Which would, which would allow this to go forward and the next project that comes in would be held to that standard going forward.
She'll understand it, and I think that that's kind of where we're-
But she may need to come up with some language for the code, or is it just an interpretation?
No, it's her interpretation, it's my interpretation.
If it's just her interpretation-
And I'm getting direction from you on my interpretation.
So, that it doesn't, we don't need to send somebody-
If, if you want a step back definition, if you want some design interpretation, that would need to go to the planning.
I think that has something written down. We just can't say, hey, just based on what you hear, that I'm going to just interpret differently, because one day, somebody else is going to interpret potentially different from that. So, I do think that a document needs to be prepared, you know, for like that.
Yeah, we have a book of interpretation.
Book of interpretation.
Which sounds silly.
Which would make it clear with the pictures and say this is exactly what it would be. And you can't have it.
So, are you comfortable, are you comfortable with getting in the book of interpretation?
Are you comfortable with it?
It'll be in the book, it'll be interpreted.
Yes, I am comfortable.
If you're comfortable with that, I think we have a direction.
So, I'll make a motion. Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the appeal for the Amara House in Atherton, allowing the parapet walls to exceed over the, I think, well, to, can I say that? For the interpretation of the building code to allow the architectural design element of the parapet walls on the main house and the accessory structure wall and fourteen and a half feet and the garage of eleven and a half feet.
I think you could get all of that if you said uphold the appeal based on the alternate interpretation as proposed before you.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, if we, if we like, completely-
Please.
Please vote on, on the accessory buildings separately, because I still feel the same way on the accessory building, and I would hate to express my displeasure on the whole motion, just because we insist on, on having one motion for everything.
I will go back to Councilwoman Lewis, can you, are you ready to a modification of that, to split, split the baby?
Well, okay, so I'll make two motions. The first motion is to take the planner's alternate interpretation of the parapet wall for the main house building height and accept the appeal.
Uphold the appeal.
Uphold the appeal.
And do I have a second? I was having a, any further discussion on it? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any of both?
Okay, that is me. So, the second motion is to take the planner's alternate interpretation in respect to the accessory structure of fourteen and a half feet and the garage of eleven and a half feet for the Amara House and uphold the appeal.
Can I get a second on that, please? I'll second it, and any further discussion on that?
I, I, I would like Lisa to state what your alternative interpretation is for the accessory structure.
For the record, you can just say for the record.
Oh, you're going to allow the full height of an end wall at the minimum width that's required by the building code, so it's described that.
At the maximum width?
Minimum width required by the building code.
Structure.
Minimum wall width.
Right.
It would be a minimum width, but that would also be the max-
The max would be the minimum, right.
The maximum width would be the minimum required for structural integrity.
Yes.
Okay, I thought maybe you were giving me a bait switch here.
Lisa, does that give you what you think?
So, how does that, how would that change this from what we're looking at right now?
It would allow what you're looking at.
Right.
But it would, it would not allow something, you know, where this would be much wider, you know, come a little bit. It would only allow this to be the minimum width that's required to build that wall, whatever that is, two feet.
In other words, we're avoiding the mass.
Correct.
Does it answer the question that? Simply because that wall would be a minimum?
Yeah, I didn't draw for accessory fifteen, eleven.
Right. So, I think that that should answer your question. So, I second that motion and all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None opposed.
So, one opposed. Thank you very much, and thank you very much, and your models are fabulous. They help us to notice them all of your models.
3D rendering?
I gotta get my kids to do 3D rendering.
I'll put it off just a minute.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so, same, the discussions kind of chattered, let's go ahead and move on to the regular portion of the agenda. We're going on item number twenty, which is authorize an issue-
What about eighty-two?
Did I miss anything?
Fisher seven.
Oh, wow, backup reverse, apologies. Going to nineteen, ordinance amending the Appicton Municipal Code Section seventeen forty, accessory building structures. Lisa Consterston?
Thank you. The current code requires a separation between accessory building and accessory structures as well as between the main building and accessory structure, and that's an eight-foot separation. We propose to retain that eight-foot separation when you have the main building, like a detached garage or a van and a half, you know, trellis structure, so you maintain the eight-foot separation between the main building, accessory building, accessory structure, but provide more flexibility between accessory structures themselves. So, right now, if you have a pool house, you cannot have a trellis be two feet away from it. It even needs to be attached, or it has to be eight feet away. Similarly, we've had some built-in fire pits where they want to have built-in seating. We said, well, the fire pit and the seating are two different structures, they have to be eight feet away. That's kind of too far, I think, or smores. And, you know, near a pool to a spa or a pool to a guest house, you know, that eight-foot separation caused some, some difficulties with designers in their projects. So, we brought it forward to the planning commission, it took several meetings to kind of hash it out, but after a presentation by our building official, they were very comfortable with referencing that minimum setback required by the building code. And that may vary, so it may depend on what type of structure is and the type of construction. So, if you have kind of an open wood frame structure to a fire pit, it may need more separation, and if you have, you know, a solid one-hour fire rating wall with sprinklers, it may have a closer separation. So, it's going to vary based on the type of structure, and at least now, we have consistency also. It's not that they're designing to one standard in the zoning code and a different standard in the building code. So, the planning commission does recommend removing that eight-foot separation requirement only between accessory structures and themselves and accessory buildings, and only referencing the minimum separation requirement in the building code. So, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Beautiful. Any questions from council? No questions from council? Beautiful. Love it. And no questions from me? Any questions from the public on this item moment? Seeing no questions from the public, I'm going to, do I enclose that and bring it back to council? Final comments? Any final comments, or is this very clear there? Beautiful. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
A second.
All in, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Wow. This must be a baseball game. Let's go ahead and move on to item number twenty on the regular agenda. We're moving to authorize an issue, a request for proposal for Alcamino Real Reduction Lanes and Traffic Study. Mike Consterston?
It's Mayor, members of the city council, proposed, this proposed operational study is directly related to the town's interest in exploring the reduction of travel lanes on Alcamino Real from six lanes to four lanes, and it's a necessary first step required by Caltrans to perform, to perform an engineering analysis to evaluate potential impacts of this reduction. The purpose, need, and process for the selection of a traffic engineering consultant are outlined in the staff report as well as the RFP, which is a task to the staff report. However, I would like to speak to several questions and comments which we received. The first one was regarding the intersection that's outlined in the request proposal as far as taking traffic counts, and one intersection that was not mentioned was Glenwood, and, so we will modify that in actual Glenwood, as you, you all know, is actually, it turns into Valparaiso, which is across Alcamino Real. So, we will modify the RFP to designate it as Glenwood slash Valparaiso, because the intent is to gather traffic information for the entire intersection. Another question was related to whether or not this study would be looking at dedicated lanes for emergency response and transit, and, you know, the answer to that is no, not specifically. You know, the purpose of this study is to assess feasibility of reducing lanes on Alcamino Real. If the answer is yes, then as, as the next step, we will take a look at how to utilize the additional space that's going to be there as a result of that, that lane reduction. And then we also received a question regarding, is this study going to address traffic, the traffic signal at Selby Lane as well as hybrid pedestrian beacons? And the answer is, is no. Once again, because the focus of this study is really to study and analyze this corridor as opposed to specific improvements at specific intersections within that corridor. And the, and the reason for that is because specific, in, the specific intersection improvements may differ if Alcamino Real is a four-lane roadway versus a six-lane roadway. So, again, the first part is really to focus on the feasibility, and if it is feasible, then, you know, we will take a look at, you know, specific improvements at intersections as part of the next phase of the work.
So, one, Councilwoman Lewis?
So, Mike, considering that the hybrid beacons and the stock line intersections at Selby are not part of this study, we would not go ahead and install them until the study was complete? Is that correct?
No, the, there is two hybrid pedestrian beacons that is part of the Caltrans project that is part of an existing pedestrian improvement project, and those are at Alejandra and Isabella. Those would, would move forward.
We're going to move forward with those?
Yes.
And then how would they be impacted by this study?
Well, I don't think it would be impacted at all, because let's say, for instance, they're in, and then the study shows that it is feasible to reduce the number of lanes, and then over time, and whatever that process is to actually go through that main reduction, well, the hybrid pedestrian beacons will still serve a purpose of providing a, you know, basically a signalized crossing for pedestrians.
It would just be a better situation all around, probably, or possible.
Yes, because what the effect would be is pedestrians would have less, a less distance to, to walk.
And the second question about, there's, will this study take into consideration traffic backup and flow? Is that, that's exactly what it's going to do? Like if, if it's, because that's what I hear all the time from, from residents, that we're just going to create gridlock if we reduce the number of lanes in our one-point-six-mile area going from Redwood City to Menlo Park and vice versa. But, so that's what the study will do.
Yes, that's going to, that is going to be the primary focus, and also, that's why the limits of the study go beyond the town of Atherton. In fact, on the north side, it actually goes beyond, you know, quite a bit into Redwood City, and the reason is because we wanted to capture the intersection of Woodside and Alcamino Real, which is a major, major intersection, we wanted to study it, as well as Caltrans wanted to study the potential impact of that.
And it's focusing also on pedestrian safety?
Well, no, at this point, again, it's just purely an operational analysis.
Just flow, just flow.
Just flow.
Beautiful. Councilman, wouldn't there any comments or questions?
Sure.
Questions?
Yeah, sure. So, do we know how much this is going to cost? I didn't see that in here. In fact, it said on the financial analysis, it said, no impact.
No, we do not know what the cost is, that's going to be part of the, you know, review process. What is currently budgeted in your capital improvement program is one hundred thousand dollars for this fiscal year, but, but again, we'll have to see what the proposals come in.
Well, I meant to pull up the capital improvement program, and I recall very clearly what the discussion was at that time, and, and that was to study, and I'll quote, "Funding to prepare engineering and technical reports in cooperation with Caltrans to analyze the issues and proposed solutions to improve safety on Alcamino Real," which included looking at Selby Lane and other places. So, so, you know, all we're doing now is looking at, at the, the lane reduction, and, and so I really think that there's more to improving the overall safety. There could be a trade-off of putting a light at every intersection to improve safety. So, and I, I fully understood that we were going to, with a hundred thousand dollars, look at all cabbots, and it seems that it's just been moved now down to reducing the lanes, and so that gives me a little bit of concern. Also gives me some concern because, you know, we're not really sure, as you pointed out in your, in your discussion, and I appreciate you doing that, we're not really going to look at, but this will aid a discussion on, on what the impact may or may not be with, say, the fire district and emergency response vehicles. But it would seem logical to me that we would actually talk to those people about this and to make sure we understand their concerns and what some alternatives could be, so that when we build a, spend maybe up to a hundred thousand dollars, that we would potentially build that into or find a way to simulate that in the model when we're asking somebody to build us a model. So, so can, for me, concern about coordination with the other, with the other organizations that are, that are here in town, coordination or better understanding of really how Redwood City and Menlo Park are going, and, and I would also, since we're looking at bike and pedestrian safety, I would also want to understand, you know, when we're doing traffic counts, how many bikes are actually going up and down the Alcamino Real, because I don't think that there are a whole lot, and, and how many pedestrians are actually walking there. So, I do think it would be worthwhile to at least, if all we're going to do is count and, and do some, you know, simulation analysis, I would think that we would want to include at least that count, so we know if we're going to end up spending a ton of money on doing this, you know, what the, what the impact is and the, and the overall beneficiaries. I'm not minimizing any one person's request, but, but I guess, you know, it kind of befuddles me as to, to why we've just, and maybe, maybe you could explain that, do we have to do this traffic state, study before we even have any discussions with anybody else?
In my opinion, it's absolutely yes, because without the results of this, there's really no basis for discussion. There's going to be a lot of opinions, some based in fact, some not based in fact, there's going to be, you know, so what we want to do is create, you know, data that we can, that everyone is going to be a part of reviewing, that, that is going to be based on engineering conclusions, that, you know, so, and I think, and that's really important, because that's going to be the basis of these discussions. And with regards to the pedestrians, I do believe we will get those pedestrian counts, we are taking intersection vehicular and pedestrian bike counts at, I think, thirty-seven different intersections, and so by getting those counts at intersections, you really don't need to get the counts in between.
Okay. All right, so your counting for pedestrians, that wasn't clear in the report, but thank you for that. So, bikes would be something that I would like to have at least a count on, and I realize they're going to grow, because more and more people are riding bikes, there's not a question about it, but I would like to know what that number is and what those projections are, the same as you were doing a projection up to 2040, but, but- But, but, uh, again, you know, for, for me, to, to say that we're taking a hundred thousand dollars that we were going to do everything with, or at least that was my understanding and that's what the write-up was, um, and essentially saying, we think we may end up spending this all on a simulation model, albeit it may be a great one. Um, I, I, and, and we haven't heard the final discussions from, from the, you know, the fire district, because they, you know, give us input periodically. Um, you know, I think we might be going forward. I, I, I would, I would suggest that perhaps as opposed to going forward with an RFP, we take, take a step back and say, here's an RFI, to say, how much do you guys think it would cost for you to do this for us? And then we have a feeling for exactly how much this could cost us. Um, you know, at least get a, a rough order of magnitude number and, and the timeframe for it to be done before we perhaps put the whole hundred thousand dollars at risk.
Well, we're not putting anything at risk.
Well, we don't have to take any, I agree with you, but.
And whether we call it an RFI or an RFP, we're basically asking the same information from the consultants. Given that this is the type of operational analysis that Caltrans is going to require, um, what is, you know, your cost to, to accomplish this scope of work and fee? Uh, they, they are going to be required to submit a schedule, so we will know that. And I guess another thing I, so we're not setting unrealistic expectations, um, one hundred thousand dollars. When we described it in the capital improvement program, you, you, our intent was not to describe, well, one hundred thousand was going to, was going to find all these answers and actually implement something. Uh, it's just, it's just the start. And, and the very start is, is this very necessary operational analysis. And, uh, and we think it's important because we know that this is a very high priority with the city council. And, and again, you know, when you're talking about reducing the number of lanes, uh, the first question's going to be, what kind of impact is there going to be, and where are the impacts going to occur? And you don't, we're, no one's going to be able to, to provide anybody with reasonable, accurate answers without doing this kind of stuff.
So my, let me, uh, I just want to interject real quickly. So Mike, in a nutshell, this is the foundation for the town to do anything on Alkamino related to working with Caltrans, period. This would be our foundation document, analysis, if we choose three lanes, lights, whatever we choose, this is going to be how we start. We are going to have to have this.
Well, correct, because I think the core question to begin with is, is, um, the lane reductions from six to four, is that even feasible? Um, if the answer is no, well then, okay, so then now let's move forward. Just because we can't reduce lanes from six to four doesn't mean there aren't things we can do to improve, you know, the leap of pedestrian access and safety.
Councilwoman Lewis, please.
I just want, so, then, the analysis to potentially reduce the lanes from six to four, uh, operationally, traffic flow-wise, but I was really hoping that we would then maybe see, you know, uh, what would be the benefit of doing that? I mean, is that something that could be, um, gleaned out of this study? I mean, if, if we did, what would be the benefit? And if we did, then what, what would be the downside? You know, is there a downside? Is there an upside? And, and, you know, is it even feasible?
Well, I mean, as an engineer intuitively, I can tell you the benefit. I cannot tell you the downside, and that's the reason for doing this study.
Okay.
What the benefit is, is that from the standpoint of improving pedestrian bicycle safety, you know, to think that you can make a unmarked or a marked crosswalk at an uncontrolled intersection across six lanes of traffic safe, to me, is not real.
Kind of insane.
Right.
It's dangerous.
So, so really, the, the, the thought here is that when, the way you make that crossing safer is that you narrow the crossing. The way you narrow the crossing is to reduce the number of lanes. When we first even started talking about this, it was just based on simple observations of when you go south out of, uh, Atherton into Menlo Park, you go from six lanes to four lanes. When you go north, out of Atherton into Redwood City in San, uh, Catsumato County, it goes down to four lanes. So why do we need six lanes within the town of Atherton when there are no major feeders? Major feeder being like a Woodside Road, which is connected to a freeway. There is nothing like that within the town. So that's how we initially started the conversation with Caltrans, when we were, started talking about ideas, about how can we improve bicycle pedestrian access?
I remember that.
And how can we get people across, uh, Alkamino Real, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a more safe way? Um, so, so again, intuitively, by reducing the number, the number of lanes, and also I believe that's going to, it's going to improve vehicular safety, uh, because it's going to improve visibility. And again, if you're trying to make a left turn anywhere on Alkamino Real, uh, trying to make a left turn against two lanes of traffic versus three, just makes sense, it's going to be safer, so. So, so anyway, so intuitively, you know, as an engineer, we believe that going down, reducing the lanes is going to improve. I, but there is no intuition as far as what the downside is going to be, and that's why you do this analysis.
Okay.
And just because we do the study doesn't mean we reduce the lanes.
Do it, right.
Got you, got you. Vice Mayor DeGoliere.
So I have a couple of questions. One is why do we need to pick up Woodside Road? Why are we going all the way to Redwood rather than Dogwood or Dunbar?
Why, I'm, I'm asking why we.
Why are we going so far north? And it's going to.